Oh.
I can't find it. I just have the screen about Kevin.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, don't worry. Mark was just reading in the Illinois Water Water little newsletter thing that I forget what it was. Somebody was selling the poem for something and he's like, because we've been high said, well, let's keep it. I mean, it works. We don't need it, but I hate to throw it the dumpster or anything out of it.
Yeah, better than scrap, but for sure.
So if it helps somebody.
Yeah.
Yes. That should be my. As of right now, that should be.
Yeah.
Pretty accurate. It's on strategy, but that should be.
Okay.
There you go. Isn't that right?
How long?
That's not the. No.
Oh, I agree with that.
So so the ten mile one, there's there's a couple.
With expenses.
But they have.
The old box.
Okay. Or the.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah. Okay, that's what he said. So I emailed him and I think if I didn't hear back for a couple days, I would try the phone. Yeah.
Well, I'm.
Oh, yeah. Hey, I have some.
Well.
Right.
He has some good things. I would like.
Okay. Okay.
I did say that.
Okay. I got a lot.
I think.
Far up here.
If you would please silence your cell phones or put it in vibration mode. Appreciate it. All right, we've got several clocks. We're going to go ahead and call a meeting order. You'll all please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and to us as a whole. Okay, before we get started, I do want to know if we have some technical challenges tonight or technical problems. We have a Zoom licensing issue issue. And we have a owl problem. So we're going to try and record the meeting tonight and have it available for tomorrow.
The owl is gone.
The owl is going down. Okay, so we'll have it going in just a minute or two. Okay, I am going to ask Carol for our roll call.
Joe Boye.
Here.
Kevin Kelly. Lynn Norris.
Here.
Dave Braga.
Here. All right, I'm going to make one change to the frequency of the agenda. I am going to do the new trustee before we get started with the rest of our agenda. I'd like to introduce Ashley Richard to the board. She is a teacher at the Fairberry School District and special ed teacher, I believe.
Yeah.
And she's had several interactions with the village and they've been very positive interactions. And I said she was interested in the position. Benny and I talked to her and I think she'll make a great trustee. So I am recommending to the board that we put Ashley in our open trustee position. So I would need a motion of the board this time to do that. Make a motion to. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Have a motion, a second to fulfill, put Ashley Richard in the open trustee position. If there are any questions or discussions. At that, we'll do a roll call vote. Carol?
Joe Boye.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
David.
Yes. All right, Carol, will you go ahead and administer the oath?
I say your name. I, Ashley Richard, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the village trustee, the duties of the village trustee to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Ashley, thanks. Ten for voting for this. I think you're a great girl. So you are now a trustee and you will be able to vote on anything you feel comfortable or you want the rest of the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Great. I have four on our agenda. It's a consent agenda. It's all items considered to be routine and not controversial by the Village Forge. The consent agenda includes the financial statements and payment of the bills for April. It's the approval of the open and closed minutes from the April second session, from the April twenty second work session, both open and close. So did anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes? Anybody have any questions or comments on the financial statements or payment of the bills? I would like to point out one thing. The end of year statement that we have, the projected fiscal year budget revenue was nine hundred thirty five thousand and the actual was nine hundred twenty eight thousand. So it was extremely close. So great job, Sarah, on working on the revenues for the budget.
Thanks.
If you look at the expenses, because of the way the expenses were generalized for some of the grant projects we did, the expenses do not come close like that, but in the net they do balance. So the great job on budget projections from last year. So all right, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items.
I'm sorry. We have a motion and second to approve consent agenda. Is there any final questions or discussions? If not, Carol, roll call vote.
Joe Boye.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next item is the citizens' hearing. I should have announced earlier. Was there anybody in the audience? Nobody signed up? Okay. I'll move on to report for myself. First is a recap on the sewer study. The financing has not progressed. Basically, no change on that. I do want to say that on getting the last $10,000 of the money from the phase one grant study, I submitted four different items, one to the Army Corps of Engineers, three to Illinois IDNR, three of the four have been approved. The fourth one came back answered what I asked, but apparently I didn't ask what EPA wanted me to ask. So I've got to resubmit one of the four items to IDNR. And hopefully we'll know by next month we'll have approval for everything. So we have made some progress on that. I attended a Kier's conference in Springfield. It's a one day conference and had three different tracks. I attended the water track to try and learn more about water project financing. Basically, what I learned was a lot of what we've heard from other sources, that a lot of the federal money is going to go to the lead replacement projects. There might be some available to help with different other water projects, including building at the kitchen basement. So I'm doing some following up on that. So it was it was worthwhile. I picked up a few more contacts to talk to about the possible grant for detention base. So we'll see if we can get some help there. I am going to ask Mark to cover the Siren upgrade status. So I want to bring up GNS here for a minute. Might be able to combine a couple of things here. We talked about GNS wiring several times and we learned that we could do the wiring through TIF funding. We talked about upgrading Outlook and GNS volunteered to come and answer any questions we might have. I know we had questions on the wiring on, you know, how much of it we really needed to do and some things like that. And on Office 365, I think, I know we talked about it. And I think what Sarah, do you remember what the cost was going to be?
I don't. It's not a huge difference than what we're doing now, but it provides us with a lot more. I can't remember. It's like maybe five to $10 a month more than what we're paying now for everything and it it gives us a lot more.
Okay, so would you like to just talk about the office upload product for mail?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's.
This is Brandon Harbison, by the way. My my full brain.
Yeah, no problem. You're fine. So there's three different options on the licensing. There's there's one license for email only, which would be helpful probably for most of the trustees. The second one would be online applications. So if you need access to Word, PowerPoint, any of those things, those would all be like a cloud based product through Microsoft that's accessible through their the webpage basically. The third and the most expensive is the license where you can actually download and install applications on a computer. Right now, what you guys have is a couple of different logins that you're sharing across multiple computers. It's intended to be used for one person on five different computers and you're using it for multiple people on multiple computers, which wasn't quite the intention from Microsoft. So the desire here would be to clean up a lot of the licensing compliance issues and make sure that we get you guys in a point where we can help you get additional mailboxes when needed when we bring out another officer or another trustee here into that stuff and just try and make sure that we're under compliance with municipal ads and all that. So.
Okay, as far as functionality that we have today, will it handle aliases like Village of Mayor or Village of Hudson Mayor?
Absolutely.
It will do aliases. How about committees?
The aliases, if you just want to add an additional email address to a particular user's mailbox, there's no cost to that. That would be, you know, if you wanted to mayor@hudsonisle.org, we would just add that to your mailbox. If you want to do a distribution list, wherever go, that email would effectively go to multiple people. There's also no cost for that. They only license the actual user mailboxes.
Okay, can we switch to a .gov suffix instead of .org?
Yep, we could actually do both. So we could add the .gov and you could still continue to receive email from your current domain name.
Okay, because I would like to see long term. I would like to see a switch to the .gov. Same thing. So if somebody has, if we switch, okay, will my old email through Rackspace automatically get forwarded? If somebody sends me an email with my old Rackspace address, will Rackspace forward it to the new one?
Is it at Rackspace or is it at Hudsonisle.org?
It's at Hudsonisle.org.
Yeah, so we'll take care of all that because we'll.
Okay, you take care of that.
We'll move that over and then we'll copy the content.
Okay.
And so you'll have all your old content in your new mailbox and then any new emails will just come to the system.
Will it handle the freedom of information request that we get?
Yep, there's a piece built in. There's a like a municipal compliance component to that and you can do that right through Microsoft. There are some other products that are out there that do that better. But absolutely, yes, there's multiple municipalities in this area using Office 365.
Okay, trustees, any questions?
For that middle tier you mentioned, does that get you like shared storage or your documents like Teams or something or?
Yep, yeah, and it also includes.
Okay. We should start organizing ourselves.
Yeah, that was a big piece that I liked about it too.
Yeah, so you'll you'll gain access to the OneDrive piece, which is just for shared files.
Okay.
There's also a SharePoint component. So there's an actual webpage where you can go and build multiple sites. So if you wanted to do something like your ordinances, you could have an ordinance site and whoever's in charge of ordinances here can actually go and make sure that each one of you has access to see those things. So if a constituent has a question about a particular ordinance, maybe you don't have to wait on somebody else to do that. You could all pull that up.
Okay, does anybody else have questions? I recommended to the board that we do the upgraded outlook.
You might have a question.
Yes, Kathy.
Actually, I do. What about archive emails?
Archive emails? Yeah, so it'll hold on to the data. I think it's seven years is how it's set from municipalities. It may be longer than that, but like archive, like current archives?
They're going to move our Rackspace stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Well, there's been a lot of trustees come and go, so.
If there's a mailbox and the other system, we should go.
There are archives in the other system. So if we can move the archive over, then we've got everything.
Yep.
Okay, what do trustees think on on Rackspace?
Yeah, the middle tier where it's all in the cloud. I don't think you hit on anybody's local machine or.
I I think you're going to have a couple of people that probably need Outlook and stuff locally. And if you're if you're typing documents and opening things constantly throughout the day, they're probably going to want the local applications.
Okay, does the conversion include training for WMEs?
I'll make sure I come and sit with you. Only raise your hand. That's why I said you.
All right, before we go ahead and switch, somebody's going to have to make a motion to to approve the switch of our email server or email from Rackspace to Outlook.
We'll make a motion to to move our email to the cloud based Office 365, this server system.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any final questions or discussions? Now, Carol, we need a roll call vote.
Joe Boye.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Okay, then the other topic for GNS was the upgrading of the wiring. I definitely recommend that we put fiber between the buildings instead of copper or panel. If we don't replace all the other wiring, we've seen the wiring spaghetti pile that we have upstairs here and that could be organized, re-done and upgraded. Capacity of the wire, the category five to six or whatever is probably not a big issue. We don't have a lot of high band with applications as far as that goes. But what what are our thoughts on upgrading?
Yeah. I said before, I didn't think we needed all of the future money. I'm okay with that.
Okay, it can be done with chip. I can check that.
So then I'd be okay with it. If it was coming out of general budget, I'd be more hesitant to do it. It's different money. It doesn't matter.
If we ever had to troubleshoot what we've got, and I used to work a lot with data networks. Trying to get through a spaghetti, as this one is small compared to someone we've tried to work through. So the getting the wiring correct will eliminate future problems and really help us down the road, I think, when we may start needing higher bandwidth applications. So.
There's also an issue going back to the guy's office. When we switched the phones, there's not enough. It's not set up right back there. They're kind of sharing wiring that isn't correct. I do know that. We figured that out just a couple of weeks ago, maybe when we were here.
We have to do some new wiring.
Some new wiring back there for sure, the guy's tech office for sure.
It would make sense to run new people and release that. We have to run some new wiring anyway. Are we aware of any other new wire we need?
There's one.
Station that takes your batteries or.
It's for the, you need to move the body.
Body can't bring our in fact, how true. Desire to get it up into this front of this. There are a couple of things that are kind of outstanding for our mission, so.
There are a few of those over at it. And I don't know if you have a desire for any connections out here as far as they know there are any. There's wireless out here, but I don't know if there's any wire out here. So if you wanted one, it'd be great to do it.
Okay, I'll be careful considering.
Trustees, what are we? Does anybody have questions to bring in on the wiring? Hey, does anybody want to make a motion on it or want to just end it another month like kind of rapid?
I've got the role with the project. I'm okay with this. It's just.
Okay. Are we, so are we, we want to do the full full scope of rewire? That's a general. Then I'll make a motion to have GNS upgrade all of our wiring.
We do have a motion to upgrade wiring from the GNS proposal a few months back. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I will add, it's not part of the motion, but it can be funded with TIF. So we have a motion and a second to upgrade our wiring. Do we have any final questions or discussions? Now, we need a roll call vote.
Joe Boye.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Carries? All right. Next, I've got two additional topics that are on the agenda. One is just a reminder of the conference coming up at Lexington. Lexington mayor who heads up the Plankton Mayor's Association has put together a mini conference for small communities. The IML conferences we go to are generally geared more towards larger communities and he's trying to set one up for small communities. So I plan to attend. The enrollment cost is a hundred fifty dollars and if three people go, it's three hundred. We're all three of them. So it would save us a little bit of money. I will enroll by May fifteenth. So if anybody else would like to go, please let me know by May fifteenth and we'll include this review of us on enrollment.
When is it?
June, I believe it's June twenty second. I will forward the the flyer to you. It is very recent.
What is what time?
Sorry.
What time is it?
Let me pull it up. No, yeah, it is. It's like nine to four, I think.
Is that be like travel team baseball?
I'll pull it up here. Send it to the trustees today, but you're not more than trustee one second. So I guess one second email. I'll send it to you and then the time is on the flyer that I sent out today. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was committee assignments with new trustees, updated committee assignments or candidate assignments. I'm also thinking about having a seventh committee just for tip coordination stuff. Lynn has been doing a great job on that, but I'd like to have a committee long as our tip activity is very high and I think it'll be high the next couple of years. But I'd like to make that a temporary committee and a top of bill that means that he would be part of the joint and not as you get where you willing be on.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we have our new committee assignments. Sarah, I'll send you this list more or less. So no major changes. Just substitute new trustees for the same. Yeah. Ashley, you will be over or over yourself like we told. So your committee members will be Phil and Lynn. So. Okay. That's all I have at this time. Want to report on water, public property, streets and zoning, Jay?
Two point five six million for the month, eighty five thousand per day, and I believe. And I believe if I heard right, Sarah calculated the water loss at three percent. So that's good. We were able to put up this month, one of the new pieces of playground equipment up at the ballpark. I think I mentioned last month, we got the the ship over here, so now we got a new piece, kind of a monkey bar steering wheel thing, so if you happen to up there, you should notice that. And hopefully this next month, with it being so wet, I'm not sure about how much drainage stuff I'm gonna be able to do. So the intent is to work on the the big slide coming soon. Also, started to, I was gonna have a meeting with Patrick today about the crosswalks. He had something kind of come up, had to change that, so that's gonna be later on this week. So should be getting the, definitely have South Street one done this month, and hopefully get a good chunk on the up there, the other one done as well. Of course, Lynn knows this, but everybody should come up and watch ballgame and visit the concession stand. Lots of new stuff up there, lots of really nice stuff.
Lots of restaurants.
Yeah, and it just shy of steak and lobster. I think they got it under control up there. Um, so that's good. We we spent some some time the last week or so, just re-cleaning out some piles and stuff, and you know, we did did that over last summer, but I was gonna do it again this summer, but with all the water, we did it again, so that's, there's a couple areas still to do that they just are too wet really to to get there, to do that. The other thing, why go back to the concession stand, is one of the things was a three-bait sink and and stuff like that. And like to thank Philip Boland, we called him about doing some of the plumbing work and everything, and he graciously donated that to the village, so. Anyway, that's mostly what I have.
Does the big slide even wait with it?
I didn't read that part of the instructions.
I'll take my own rest.
Is it, is it a twisty?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Seven, how how big? Seven, seven?
Eight, eight.
Yeah.
Did any, how many power problems showed up with the heavy rains that we had?
Um, three maybe, but lines that didn't empty out quickly. And one is still kind of a problem. And unfortunately, that pile is very little on in the village right away. It mostly goes through the center of some folks' backyards. So that's, I I think I was gonna talk to Patrick about that this summer, about options of how we could maybe re-reroute that, connect it into the system elsewhere, because it has not been a great one in the past, but it's pretty much all on private property. So that's a little bit of an issue. There there was a fog on a tile that has never been a problem in the past, but we stayed after that, and after about four hours of getting, finally got through it, and so not sure what the cause of that was, but when the water all goes down out of it, we're gonna hopefully camera that to see if there's a breakage or something in that. And a couple of the other ones that are normally problem children are just needed kind of a little, they were running, but just could be a little better, so we cleaned them anyway, so. But the post office area, which had been a major problem in the past, on the bright side of things, was probably one of the driest spots in town, so that was a huge success on what we did up there, so.
I know it hasn't been easy, and you're still working on stuff, but I appreciate your efforts on that. Getting that area cleaned up, and I know what you're working on now is gonna help a lot of areas too.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Danny? Thanks, Danny. Next on our list is Village Marshall and Mark. I'd like you to do a police report, and then just follow it up with the EMA report.
As you can see, I passed out a copy of my report, and on the top are the hard statistics that we always have. So take a look at those if you have any questions about those. Please let me know. I attended a neighbors' update training. Neighbors is our primary reporting to the federal government. So they keep kind of changing how we do it, so there's constant training on it. Then you can see some of the meetings that we that I attended, the St. Jude's fundraising event, planning and wrap-up meeting. Because we did do the St. Jude's fundraising, and Chris and I assisted with that. And it was a great event. I think it speaks highly of the village, that we can raise that kind of money for St. Jude's in a small community and in a small business. Meeting with Axon by the phone before they came out. They came out this month, and they installed our new video systems and all three splat cards. So they're up and running now. Now we just need to sync them with the body cameras, and then I'll write a policy on how we're going to operate the body cams. And then you'll see us walking around with body cameras on them. About one year before, we actually have to do it by mandate, mandated by June of twenty-five. So we got that done about a year early. We were in constant meetings and discussions along with the mayor, with the McLean County EMA, because we're going through that process so that everybody understands it, that currently our outdoor weather sirens, otherwise known as tornado sirens, can only be set off now by three radios that we currently have. It cannot be set off by the county. That is a rarity for the county. Most agencies, most municipalities have both options. And we never did have that, but we're moving toward that, and hopefully, I hope by next month, I'll be able to report that, okay, we've got that done, and now we have a fallback, that the county can also set off, set off the sirens. Hopefully, you heard the sirens. I'll blend my EMA and police, because doing the same thing. Hopefully, you heard the sirens go off. We got our new radios, they're brand-new radios, and the technician worked on all three sirens here in the village so that though that new system, when the county gets the capability, they'll be able to use that system. So it's kind of a an intermediary point right now. So we tested our new radios, and we're great sirens went off. Glad to say the Prairie View now is up and working now. Looked like it was probably, according to the technician, probably struck by lightning quite a while ago and hasn't been working for quite a while. But now it is up and working. The last siren we need to get on board is the siren up at the at the lake, because we do have four sirens for the township. Three here in the village, and then one up at the lake. There is one at Kamara, but we don't control that. The county controls that completely, so. We issued a lot of golf cart permits. It's warm now, everybody wants to ride the golf carts. Seventeen golf cart permits during the month were up to twenty-eight. We did our usual stop sign details and school bus stop arm enforcement, and our and our radio, our radar details on East and West Franklin Street, North and South Broadway. Then again, the street light report, as you will see, these are the same six ones from last month and the month before, and we keep sending reminders to AMR that they need to get going on these on these street lights. I surmise that it's taken a while because they're converting again to the LEDs. So it's not just replacing the bulb. They have to look through the whole process, replacing the housing, doing some rewiring to move it to LEDs. And that is pretty much it, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Mark on police report or EMA activity? No, thank you, Mark. Next is our reports of standing committees, the finance, budget, contracts, and employees. Lynn?
Uh, discuss a book on appropriations ordinance. Yes. All right, so I, we need to discuss appropriations.
Can you just kind of explain, Ashley?
Sure.
Basically, it has to be done annually. It's gets sent to the county stadium. We have a budget, and then it's been approved by the board, and it balances, and so that goes to the county. They stamp it as filed, and now it's just on record at the county.
Okay.
We do this every year at the first.
So I have a motion to approve ordinance number one three eight one, the appropriations ordinance for
Should we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the appropriations ordinance one three one for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Any questions or discussion? All right, Carol?
Joe Boye?
Yes.
Kevin Kelly?
Yes.
Lynn Norris?
Yes.
Ashley Richard?
Yes. All right, next is, we are to go to Office 365, so the hiring of the new full-time employee. If we're talking about this, Pat, can I be specific on name, or do I have to even pick it up? Even, okay, so we offered the full-time position to Michael Campbell, who is our part-time employee right now. After much consideration, he decided to decline the offer. So you don't have to vote tonight, but our next step is, after talking to Danny, I think it would be best to put out a job for a another part-time. So Mike is just gonna go back to his regular part-time. Nothing's gonna change for him. So I think we should put a posting out for another part-time position, and we think it's gonna be best to kind of gauge the person for that position as far as if we think that they can handle the workload and the job description best by like kind of testing it out and then potentially offering them a full-time position. It's just so hard with different qualifications that we need to know, like right off the bat, if somebody is that we'd be able to have that position, and we don't wanna get into position where we hire somebody full-time thinking that they're right for it, or and we find out that maybe they're missing some of the skill sets that we need. So that's kind of our plan.
Do you have a six-month position there or something?
That's why I will, I new information, like break report meeting, so I haven't kind of gone that far on it, so I will work more with that on what we're thinking, so.
Do we know why he's applying? Did he say why?
Um, it, yeah, it was more of being the right person for the job.
He needed that.
Yeah, yeah, after much consideration, he didn't think long-term that he would be the best. Yeah, I mean, it was great. I've been talking to him several times. He answered a lot of questions, he had a lot of good questions about it, and then ultimately, it just, he did that. He didn't want to take it and then have to go back to be very content with the position.
Were you having any concern with proceeding that way with waiting for a part-time person then to do it full-time?
I'll update everybody as the processing starts, job description. And some time, I'll be glad of it.
All right, let's go looking then. Okay? Lynn, you have any else?
That was it.
All right, Phil is not here. And Natalie is not here. Danny or you or anything else that that Phil or Natalie would have brought up? I've seen the playground equipment. It was being used quite heavily already, so it was cool. So I couldn't have done it when I was nervous on it, so. Okay, next is place department. Kevin? Okay, water department. Joe?
Nothing. I sent everybody emailing. I'll give feedback on that. It did well. Put that on the website. Maybe I'll contact the bill and say, you wanna summarize this and put in the paper or something. Those could be sent down and something, and say, put this in your paper, and feel like you didn't tell the bill what to put in the paper. Right, explain that article and say, could you summarize this and put something in, I guess.
Yeah, if you can send it electronically to the well, I don't know if you've got any of their emails or not. Sorry, do you?
I do. You can type out exactly what you want, and say we'd like this, and they'll just do it. That way it's correct. I have to get that.
Okay, maybe I'll summarize it then.
Yeah. The other question, do you want a sticker on the water bill so that everybody gets that? So it's right there for.
It ends up in June before July?
Oh, oh, is it the price gonna go up or?
Just.
I don't know, as soon as I see it.
Yeah, because it's long, so I don't know if it would fit.
We could like.
If you put out our website, put like the link, that people can take it to get directed to it on the website, and if anybody wants. You said turn on the website.
Yeah. They would give it to everybody. They'd all received it. It's not just.
But there's no way they're gonna say it on.
No, we would give the link to it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm afraid we might get a lot of calls with the office saying, I don't look at the website, or I don't look at Facebook, but if we just have done that part, we could say, well, it was on your water bill.
Yeah.
Done our part. I don't know, still boxes.
Yeah.
It's not hard to do those labels, and I've done those many times.
You guys have an interesting, reduce the number of phone calls to you, I guess.
We really do.
Whatever you think.
I think that will help us.
Okay.
A number of complaints.
I just think that will help us in that thing that we've put everyone's.
Well, I'll email it. I'll send you the, I'll send you the article, because you all have something on the website.
On the website.
And you can let me know the bill address and all.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all right.
I thought it was a great article and well-written, Joe, so.
Yeah, we don't get the corrections or. I wouldn't make sure it was a decent people, however it's done.
Ashley, I'll make sure you do that too, Lynn. Get you to the bill and email.
Oh, yeah, you're just starting.
I'm a newbie.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Joe, anything else?
No.
Right, public property. Natalie's not here. Liquor commissioner myself, I have nothing to report for a liquor commission. My compliments to our police for Broad Cell Weekend. I know you got complaints on parking, but sure you didn't write too many tickets, handled everything well, and I heard some compliments. People were glad to see, you know, you guys out controlling that day, so. Ended up with really beautiful weather, and I hope people have a successful Broad Cell Weekend. Did you by any chance recall what the amount raised for St. Jude was?
It was right around seventy-four thousand. It was saying, I, you know, they had some late checks coming in, so it was getting close to seventy-four.
It made seventy-five.
Oh, it made seventy-five?
Yeah, it just stopped at the office.
Because it's got thirty-five. Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand. That's amazing, you know, we are, think about some awards for people for that. That's truly great, great effort. All right, does anybody else have any business for tonight? None? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oath, being as adjourned.